Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 17, 2022 regular meeting for the Cottage Grove City Council. I'm Steve Dennis, Mayor Pro Tem, sitting in tonight for Mayor Bailey, who cannot be here with us. So the first item that we will do is our Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask everyone to rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three is roll call, and our city administrator, Jennifer Levitt, will help us with that.
Councilmember Kombata.
Present.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Olson. Mayor Bailey.
All right, we have a forum, quorum altogether. Item number four is open forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak on an issue that is not already on tonight's agenda. If there's anything you'd like to discuss, please come up to the podium, cite your name and address for the record, and you'll have approximately three minutes to talk on this subject. I'm going to open public forum. Not seeing anyone, I'll close public forum, and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Motion adopted. Okay, first, Mr. Kombata, second, Mr. Thede. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Item six is presentations. Under six A, we have the 2022 Green Garden Awards in Public Landscaping Improvements presentation, and our Director of Parks and Recreation, Zach Doctor, will take us through on this. Welcome, Zach.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm happy to introduce two-thirds of our horticulture team. One of the interns couldn't make it, but we have our public service worker, Marcus Honcharenko, with us, who's our lead horticulturist, and then our intern, Caitlin Pachinski. You'll learn a little bit more about what they do for the community and the 300-plus gardening beds that they service and take care of and make look beautiful and do other great things that make Cottage Grove a special place to live. So I'll introduce them, and then they'll go through some of their projects and also announce the Green Garden Award program.
Councilmembers, my name is Marcus Honcharenko. I am the horticulturist here for the city of Cottage Grove. I'm in my fifth summer here. And then this is Caitlin Pachinski. She is one of my two interns. She's just graduated this spring from River Falls. And then my other intern was Caden Allen, and he was from North Dakota State, but he was done last week. 2022 projects. So our big project that we do every year is annual plantings. This year, we planted just over 3,500 plants. As always, the two main, two things we do can always come back to maintenance and mulching. This year, we did 305 yards of mulching, which is the equivalent of three football fields, but also double the amount of mulch we did last year. And then this year, for maintenance, we have 306 beds throughout the city. I was looking back the other day, in 2011, we had 118 beds. So in 11 years, we've almost tripled what we do. And then our two big projects this year were Oakwood Park and Strawberry Fields Park. So these are some pictures. That's when the annuals got delivered, two of the pots we did, and then the annuals in front of City Hall, or not City Hall, Central Fire Station. So everyone remembers what Oakwood Park used to look like, and then Zach and I were talking as the rest of the park got redeveloped, what to do with the landscaping out front. And ever since I started here, I'd always kind of looked at that berm behind there and wondered about doing a boulder wall, and Zach let me run with it. So that's what it looks like now this year. It's pretty exciting to do, and it definitely makes a difference when you pull into the park. And then Strawberry Fields is one of our new parks down in the Summers Landing area. So what we did here was just some, in two of the triangles, they set at a pretty good angle, so we couldn't put mulch in there, but we just did rock with the crabapple tree. And then in front of the sign, to kind of pay homage to what used to be there, we planted strawberry plants in front of the park sign. This year, for the Green Garden Award, we had two categories, as always, the first being the residential award. And I'll let Caitlin take that.
So this is one of the first properties, and we really liked what they had there. This is mainly focused in their backyard, so it's kind of cool to see, you know, you always see people's front yards with them to get to see their backyard. And they have like a lovely hill that they then have retaining wall on, and then a bunch of hostas, because there's a really cool old oak tree in their backyard that provides a lot of shade. So they have a bunch of varieties of hostas and really like the way they have it landscaped and like inviting for their guests to come over.
And then the second yard we saw was Mary Gutterman. We saw her yard last year as well. So she and her husband started this when they moved in about 20 to 25 years ago, and they've built the playhouse and the waterfall and all that. The cool thing now is her kids are old enough where her grandkids are now coming back to use it all. So that was kind of cool to see and learn about. And then our winner this year was Tom Keeman. He's been working on his yard for, he estimated 25 to 30 years. It was, he's got lots of different stuff going on, and he was another one that we visited with previously, and he was definitely deserving of the award this year. The second category that's new this year is the Sustainability Award. We created this award for a couple of reasons. One, the commercial category that we've previously had wasn't getting a lot of submissions and interest, and I kind of wanted to, when I relandscape stuff throughout town, I like to have, put a focus on pollinators and things like that and put, just because of the, all the PR and stuff that goes on with that right now. But also, I kind of wanted to see what people in town are doing, and we had some requests for it in the past, so that's why we added that category this year.
So this first property, they really ran with the idea of introducing back like native plants on their property, and most, if not all, their plants are native to Minnesota and the surrounding areas. And then in their backyard, they, it was mainly grass before they started working on it, and they took a large portion of it and introduced back in like prairie grasses and put it back to the natural state that you can kind of see like close to like the pond like in the picture. And then in the two pictures with orange flowers, there's a bee and a butterfly, just because they were promoting like pollinator garden. And so, I mean, you can see that it was working. They also have a lot of bird feeders out there. So they're definitely trying to cater to the native, you know, wildlife in the area. They also had like ducks that made like trails through the little grass, and it was really cute. And then the next one, they recently bought this house, so they're just starting to work on their property and improve their, you know, garden area. So they have like two raised beds where they're growing different, mainly vegetables, also some like edible flowers. They had nasturtium growing. And then we're just adding more landscaping around their back patio, and they had a really cool sign of like a no spray zone, which is just, you know, another important aspect to like consider in landscaping and when you're producing, you know, food for yourself or families, friends, et cetera. And then Alyssa Wolf has like three different like retaining all, retaining wall areas, and then grows vegetables in like two and a half of them and some fruits. She had some raspberries and stuff growing in the back. But mainly for them, they're growing it for their family, and we met two of our little kids, and they, you know, seemed excited about the garden, and that's always, you know, a fun aspect to see. And then our winner is Kate, and she's here tonight. But we really liked a bunch of different aspects of her place, because she has beautiful flowers growing and then has vegetables and general garden going, and she has nice like landscaping down to the river behind her property. And then she also does work with the woods that is in front of her property, so just bringing another aspect. And also, she has her neighborhood, you know, kids involved, working on her property and growing vegetables and learning more about just horticulture in general. So it was really the combination of all those aspects that made her the winner for us.
And then before we close, I'll just say that when we added this category, I really didn't know what to expect as far as sustainability. We've had some vegetable gardens in the past, but I was, I will say, I was blown out of the water to see what people in town are doing with their yards and their pollinator plots and giving back and getting the neighborhoods involved and stuff. It was, it was pretty inspiring to see that it's, that is going on here in town, and it was just, it was really awesome, so. With that, that's all we have.
Okay, well, and thank you, it says thank you, but thank you to you guys for putting on that nice presentation, and obviously for all of the folks who put a lot of time and energy and effort into making some beautiful things happen. It is impressive to see the work that is being done, all over the community, actually. And as you highlighted, Marcus, there's a, there's a big emphasis now on, you know, pollinator-friendly gardens and processes that, you know, are helping to say, we need pollinators, so it's a very important thing. So I understand that we have an award to give out tonight. So we'll come down and we'll join you guys up front.
Dave, can you take a picture of Kate's?
Sure.
All right, well, this is an exciting evening, and Dave, you want to hold that for us, or Kate? Yeah, so people don't know, but Kate and I are friends, and I have a chance to see all the amazing things. And I had nothing to do with weighing in on, in fact, she won that, so. But, but I get a chance to see all the great work that she does in her gardens and on her property, and it's really, really impressive. And I just wish that I had the ability to, to do that, the patience and the time, but unfortunately, I'm spread kind of thin. But before I hand this over to you, Councilmember Thede, did you want to say anything?
No, I just, it all looks great, and, I mean, it all looks very nice, and it is very important. We try to grow some things for the bees and the pollinators, too, and even had my wife one year, she was going around, there weren't too many bees, she was trying to pollinate some of the flowers herself, but it didn't work quite as well. So it's great when, when it all works out, so, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Kombata, anything you want to add?
Yeah. It's, it's a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication to, to spend the time, and it's also very rewarding to watch, to watch the, the results of all your hard work. I had a pretty good-sized garden at my old house, and I don't have one now, so I'm a little envious of you. But I did plant milkweed to try and bring the butterflies into my yard, so I'm not, I'm not quite where you are, but I'm hoping that I'll have some, some wildlife in mine as well.
All right, well, thank you, councilman. Kate, do you want to add anything? Do you want to talk a little bit, share some secrets or motivations behind it?
Well, I can add in that actually, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon kind of started this a little bit. They came out and they did a project through the Home Depot grant to do a staircase down into the forest, and then it kind of exploded from there, so.
That's awesome.
So, thank you.
And you used to be president of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and so I serve on that board, so very nice. So what it says is, Green Garden Award winner, 2022. We present that to you and congratulate you for that, so let's give a round of applause. And Pete, do you want to take some pictures? All right.
Am I locked?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations. All right, well, back up the dais, we will move on to item number seven, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything that anyone wanted to pull on this?
No, I'm good.
No, sir.
Okay, I will pull two items, and those are I and J. I is the Convention and Visitor Bureau Member Appointment, and we're very happy, I happen to serve as Chair of that particular board, that discovered Cottage Grove, I believe, is full now as far as members. And so recently, the mayor and I sat down, had an interview with a number of people, and selected Mr. Steve Hanson, who is an owner of Twin Cities Sign Installations. He's got a degree in communications and public relations, and is someone who is really interested and has a lot of passion for some of the great amenities that we have here in our communities. So he's a fantastic asset to add to that. So I will ask the council to go along with the mayor and I in that appointment. And then the item J is the Economic Development Authority Member Appointment, and again, Mayor Bailey and I had interviews with a number of highly qualified individuals, very impressive people. And so we have a position that we have decided to bring forward and fill with authorization. Her name is Sandy Scott. She works in communications and public relations field, has a tremendous amount of passion for the city, has been a very long-term resident, and wants to do her part to help our community grow in positive ways. So I'll be asking for support on both of those. So not seeing anything else, what we'll do is we'll look for a motion to.
Move consent.
Move, move made by Councilmember Thede.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Kombata. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero. So if you're in the audience for anything that was on our consent agenda tonight, all of those items have been approved. Number, the next item is eight, which is approving disbursements. Item A is approve payments for the period of 8/3/2022 through 8/11/22 in the amount of $1,273,809.67, and I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Kombata.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thede. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Number nine is public hearings. We do not have any tonight. Number 10 is bid awards. We don't have anything on that agenda. We'll move then to item number 11, which is off the regular agenda, and it's item A, which is the Cottage Grove Logistics Park, North Point Development Phase 1A, and our planner, Emily Schmitz, will assist us with this item.
All right, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. As indicated, the next item before you is the Phase 1A within the North Point Development, or Building 3. We'll get into the details of that. But again, the North Point Development is located in the city's business park, just south of 100th Street and west of Ideal Avenue. As you might recall, the master site plan was before you back in December of 2021. This encompasses about 252 acres, plus or minus, gave us the ability to look at this project as a whole, kind of a high level and overview of the project. As you can see, the total, again, 3.4 million square feet at final buildout, so we're working through this in phases. The developer comes back to us with a site plan review for each phase to ensure that we're meeting all the details of the project. Final plot is well for the particular parcel that will be developed with Building 3. Just to orientate you, Buildings 1 and 2 were up here in the northwest corner. Building 3 is being platted on its own parcel down there in the southwest corner. So as a part of a site plan review, we do look at all of the details, setbacks, parking, landscaping, et cetera. Setbacks in parking are all being met with Building 3, not only for the building, but also the parking lot, so all those setbacks are being met. Little more detail, the landscape, the developer is proposing certainly a robust landscape plan. As we look back and remember, a lot of the discussions as a part of that master site plan, we're providing sufficient screening within the area from all sides. So as you can see, robust plantings on all sides of Building 3. In addition, with their noise study, they are proposing to extend the noise wall through, expanding it essentially from the Phase 1. So in Phase 1, they can, are planning to construct on the south side of Building 1 and the west side of Building 2, and then as part of the construction of Building 3, they'll continue that sound wall along the west side of the development, and then again on the south side of Building 3, which to orientate you would be adjacent to the future 105th Street, which, if you've been out there recently, is under construction. And finally, I'll just touch on the architecture. Again, Class A TIP-up panels with a varying texture throughout to break up those long building walls, 520,000 square feet is a lot of area, so we want to make sure that those structures are being broke up per code every 100 feet. And then canopy is in a lot of glazing at each of the corners throughout the building as well. With that, I will leave the recommendation before you. North Point is in the audience if you do have any specific questions for them.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you for that presentation. Council, is there any questions or feedback that you'd like to provide on this at all?
I had one question about the landscape screening, and that is, I know that when we have the requirement for a certain number of trees and so on, is there a specific like size requirement of those trees? Are they saplings? Are they, you know, minimum six feet tall? I just noted that on the rendering, it said five-plus-year buildout, so I'm curious what, you know, some of the residents are going to want to know, like, you know, when is that, when is that screening going in, and what is it initially going to do in terms of kind of softening the facade of the building?
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Kombata. Six foot in height typically for a coniferous tree and an inch and a half diameter of planting for those overstorey or deciduous trees. However, I will indicate in this particular situation, North Point, the developer is proposing to plant some trees that are substantially larger than that, some up to four inches in diameter at planting, which is, you might know, is kind of a large B&amp;B broad burlap tree to start. However, as you indicated, it will take some time, of course, for that vegetation to mature and create that complete screening.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thede.
Just out of curiosity, I, I guess maybe it was two or three weeks ago, I was out and kind of drove around Building 2, I guess it is, that's being built right now with the walls. What's your timetable for, like Building 1, I assume, would be next, and then Building 3 after that? Is that, what's kind of timetable for that?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Zickel, Development Manager on behalf of North Point Development, overseeing construction of our park currently. So as you see right now, our Building 2, currently being built, shown on the right here, is about half a million square foot building. You know, the timeframe for that, the roofing is currently going on, and it's nearly completed at this point, so that'll be delivered at the end of this construction season, the end of this calendar year. And we're paving ahead of schedule as well, so going really well on that building, and then Building 1 will be very shortly after with walls being stood this week. So they'll likely make it to the bottom right corner by the end of the week.
Okay. And I assume you already have somebody to fill up that Building 2, huh?
So we've had good activity on site. We don't currently have any leases signed as of yet, but we're very excited to keep investing in the community and happy to bring another half a million square foot building here.
And so it's a general, pretty much the, the majority of it is probably open, and then you got office, what percentage office space or something like that, or?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we go into these assuming some portion of office, but being a speculative development, you know, it is kind of up to the tenants, and we like to use our architects in-house to kind of walk through the design with them. So it could be as big as, you know, a 10,000-square-foot office or a 2,000-square-foot office, whatever they may be.
And what's your minimum lease, square footage?
For these buildings, we'd likely start at Building 1 being the smaller building, probably around that 50,000 to 80,000 square foot demizable space. You know, the larger building, we might try to section in quadrants, so, you know, if it's half a million square feet, probably, you know, 125 maybe to start.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you. Okay, any more feedback? We're good. So there will be, I guess, three different asks. Emily, could you kindly put that back on the screen for us, and we'll, we'll work our way through those? So the, the recommendation that the staff has is broken into three components, asking the council to take the following action. So if I could get one of the two of you.
Yeah, go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 2022-111, approving the final plot for the Cottage Grove Logistics Park Second Edition and the Cottage Grove Logistics Park Phase 1A Site Plan for construction of approximately 520,000 square feet of warehouse, light manufacturing, distribution, and office space.
Okay, so motion made by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Kombata. Any further discussion at all? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Item two is the approval, approve the Cottage Grove Logistics Park Development Agreement with North Point BGP Cottage Grove Logistics Park LLC. Can I have a motion on that, please?
I'll motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Kombata.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thede. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion approved three to zero. And last but not least is adopt Resolution 2022-112, approving the Cottage Grove Logistics Park Development Plan, dated June 20, 2022, prepared by Kimley Horn and Associates, and I'll actually make the motion to approve that. I'll seek a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're all set with that item. Thank you very much, and we had a chance to tour down in that area here recently, and it's nice to see that progress happening, so.
Wonderful.
Keep, keep up the great work. Thank you. All right, moving on. Number 12 is council comments and requests, and we'll start down here with Councilmember Kombata.
I don't, I don't have any requests, and as far as comments go, I just wanted to say that I know with item K, hiring our communications manager, I'm looking forward to seeing Eric Rigby come on board and be a great addition to our team.
Excellent, thank you. It will be nice to get back to full strength in that category, so. Councilmember Thede.
Well, I guess I don't have anything real specific, but one of the things, there's a lot of things on our upcoming events calendar, if you want to take a look at the website, I think it's out there, isn't it? Yep, I thought it was. And, and then also, next week is the beginning of the Great Minnesota Get Together. And I don't know about you, but I love going to the state fair, and I've gone for many, many years, so I'm looking forward to it, but, so.
Awesome.
That's what's exciting me this week.
All right, well, it's good to see you're excited. Thank you, Councilmember Thede. I do have two items tonight for us, myself. The first one, there is going to be a fundraising effort here locally. Girl Scout Troop 58249 is hosting a lemonade stand, which will benefit Gillette Children's Hospital in St. Paul, happening Sunday, August 21st, first from noon until 1:30 p.m. at the address as follows, 8831 Upper 89th Street South, Circle South, I should say, in Cottage Grove. And there are several different ways that you can support this. One would obviously be to stop by and buy a glass of lemonade. They also have a, an online, looks like an auction, that can be achieved. I'm going to, I'm going to say the email address, you may have to review it or rewind the tape to get it, but it's www.jillettechildrens.org/ways-to-give/donateitems-to-patients. So that's out there for folks who want to access that. And last but not least would be an opportunity to donate cash, and what'll end up happening is the troop will purchase items that will go onto wish lists, including toys, games, comfort items, et cetera. So it's a really good cause, and, and we hope that everyone will support that. And then last but not least, I would like to personally invite everyone to tune in. Mayor Bailey and I are going to be doing a, another Facebook Live event on economic development, and this one is called Making Business Happen in Cottage Grove. So that'll be happening on Tuesday, September 6th at 7:00 p.m., Facebook Live, and I know that on our Facebook page, we'll have a link for that. We'll have a little discussion on some strategic objectives and how the city's economic development strategy aligns with objectives, including updates happening in our business park and other commercial areas within the city. And there's a lot of really neat things happening. This is a very exciting and amazing. And there's a lot of really neat things happening. This is a very exciting and amazing time for our city. So please tune in via the city's Facebook page and ask us questions live. Be kind of fun. So that's what I have. We'll move on to item number 13, which is workshops open to the public. We do not have any tonight. Item 14 is workshops closed to the public. We don't have anything there. And last but not least will be adjournment, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilmember Kambada.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And just a quick note to the community, our next council meeting will be on Wednesday, September 7th, right here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a fantastic night. Appreciate you watching.